This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It's July 21st, 2022. I am Greg Hooks, my chair of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission, and it is 5:01 PM, and I'm calling our meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Mr. Soltes.
Here.
Mr. Greiner.
Here.
Mr. Krosick.
Here.
And from the city, we have Jeremy Hammer, Carl DeCemus, and Michelle Thomas. Thank you all for attending, and just note for the record that unfortunately Commissioner Brown has a medical issue and won't be able to attend this evening, and Commissioner Bennett will also not be attending.
Chair, if I could, I'd also like to introduce Jamie Hoffman Perrin. If I, did I say that right, Jamie? Your last name? Okay, good. I just want to make sure I pronounce that right. She's cross-training with us tonight, kind of see how to run these meetings so that we have some backup built in. So, welcome Jamie to her first planning commission meeting.
Perfect. Thanks so much, Jamie, for being here. Welcome to the team. Okay. First item on the agenda, or the next item is approval of our meeting minutes of July 7th. If there are no changes or comments, I am willing to entertain a motion to approve.
I saw a move.
I second.
Well, we have a motion on the table and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Okay, at this point, we will open up the floor for public comment. Each commenter will have allotted three minutes. Please state your name and address, and then, once you're done stating that, you will, you will be given your three minutes to speak. Michelle will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds left, and then, at the end of three minutes, she will turn off your microphone. Anyone making out of order comments may be subject, subject to removal from the meeting. You can make your comments remotely by Zoom or by phone, and I think all of you seem to know that you just need to raise your hand if you would like to speak. If you're on your phone, you need to press star nine. And I will recognize anybody that has their, their hand up, just in the order that they appear on my screen. If you're on your phone, your name doesn't appear. You'll hear the last three digits of your phone number called out when it is your turn to speak, and you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. All remarks should be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any specific commissioner. All speakers should be courteous and courteous in their language and deportment, and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities, or indulge in derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any commissioner, the chair, or any member of the staff or the public. There will be no demonstrations during or at the conclusion of any public comment. These guidelines are intended to promote an orderly system of, of holding a public meeting to give every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individuals are embarrassed by voicing their opinions. So, given that, if there is anyone who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand now, and I will recognize you. And I see that Carolyn, last name is not shown, but might be Alan. You have the, you're the first one with your hand up. Please go ahead.
Hello. Am I being progress? Okay. My name is Carolyn Allen. I'm the founder of the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance. I reside at 3526 Harborview Drive, Gig Harbor. Yesterday Bonnie O'Malley, Kristen Moran, and I sent a letter to the planning commission, planning department, mayor and council outlining some of the immediate regulations the commission has been discussing. It is our desire to make you aware of the research we have done, as well as the communication we have done with over 381 of our members. It is through both that we have crafted language that we feel is fair and reasonable to not only the owners of short-term rentals, but to the community at large. Comparisons now begin. Walla Walla has now become one of the cities that the planning department and commission are seeming to focus their attention upon. Some of the commissions seem to side with the city of Walla Walla in terms of uses, issues as they pertain to STR regulations. We, as a group, hope to make you aware of the reality of not Walla Walla's challenges, but instead ours in Gig Harbor. I also see other college towns, as well as King County cities, that do not have the subdued nightlife as we have in Gig Harbor. Comparing Kirkland, which is basically a city that never closes, to Gig Harbor, is like comparing apples to green beans. I would encourage all of you to consider climate, economic strength, and demographics. One of the oldest homes in downtown Gig Harbor, which is nicely situated for a quick stroll to the downtown shops, recently went pending for almost 1.2 million. It's a prime example of a home that will never be affordable. Even with its advanced age of 122 years, it brings a high sales amount. One commissioner is referring to regulations set by Walla Walla that tries to ensure affordable housing for residents of Walla Walla by comparing the issue to Gig Harbor. The point we keep trying to make is Gig Harbor is not affordable. Would a large corporation spend that kind of money for a four- to five-month STR during the year and able to only rent it that long because of the, the weather that we have and the climate that we have? Another home, just a few doors south of the above-mentioned home, currently rents for $3,500 per month with no major updates. Is that affordable? I hope you're thinking in your mind, no. College towns, please do not compare Gig Harbor to cities that house colleges and universities. Again, not Gig Harbor. It would be a far stretch to assume that students from the University of Pugil Sound would travel across the Narrows Bridge to Gig Harbor to find some party action as our city closes early, unlike Tacoma and cities north in King County. Have we heard of UPS students traveling to Gig Harbor for wild parties in the history of our city? Again, I hope you're.
30 seconds.
In closing, I would like to point out, we do have some commissioners that have the ability to look at short-term rental regulations from all angles and issues. When we consistently reflect on the desire to have open discussion and do not have the, let's clamp down on those things before they get out of hand attitude, we make progress in establishing fair and reasonable regulations. I ask you to review complaints from citizens in our city who do not put their comments in writings, but instead have an over-the-fence discussion with politicians in our city.
Okay, your time's up, Carolyn. So, thank you very much for your input. Okay. I see Denise with her hand up. Please state your name and address, Denise, and go ahead. Denise, you're muted if you're speaking. Denise, you're still muted. Okay, she's put her hand down, so while she's sorting that out. Now, I don't see any other hands up. Bonnie, our, your hand is going up and down and up and down, so I'm going to assume that perhaps you would like to say something. So, Bonnie O'Malley, go ahead, please.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you.
Great. Bonnie O'Malley, 8101 Bay Ridge Avenue. And I'm a co-founder. As you know, you've had plenty of letters from, from Carolyn and from me and from many other members' input. And just reading through the last draft that you supplied to us, I would like to kind of sort of turn this around. I think that we have gotten stuck on some points. One is that there's a notion that all this got started because there were complaints, and we keep asking you, you know, give us the documentation, and let us know what those complaints were, where they came from, who was involved in it, and let's just kind of get that out there. Another one, as Carolyn mentioned, is affordability, which we know we're not going to be. We're a destination. We're a beautiful destination. I kind of feel like a positive spin on this is that we're giving more people the opportunity to come and share what we have in Gig Harbor. And so, people who would never be afford to live here can come and stay. And I think that if we look at that, you know, the positive benefits of STRs and stop blaming them for all the things that have not happened, but could happen. And the third point is that a lot of that is being put out there by the businesses that are being built on the back of putting this negative spin on STRs. I'm not saying that they don't exist. I'm not saying that they're not areas where they have some serious problems, but I don't see that in Gig Harbor. And, you know, they, they don't document. They don't identify. So, I've said in letters before, Carolyn and I, let's get away from listening to all of that negative rhetoric, and let's put this back on track. I think you're doing a great job. I think we are communicating well. Let's get this positive spin. What, what can STRs do for the city of Gig Harbor? And how can we give them regulations, which we do not object to? Have regulations that are going to make this beneficial to the city? And just get off the negative track. I think we're a little, we're a little off, but, you know, we're getting there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Carolyn, you have your hand up again, but you've already spoken once, so I don't know if perhaps you just don't know how to take your hand down, but you will not be given an opportunity to speak again. Kirsten, your hand went up, and now it's down. Is, was that intentional, or would you like to speak? I guess she has changed her mind. Okay. So, I don't see any of the hands up, so I am closing the public comment portion of this meeting, and thank you all for your input. Kirsten seems to have figured out, you know, how to get her hand back up again. Kirsten, go ahead.
Perfect. Hey, really appreciate your patience with this. Our technical issues are endless here. My name's Glenn Peterson. My wife Denise and I own the residence at 8921 Franklin Street in Gig Harbor, and we really appreciate you taking our comments. While many on the planning commission may view STRs with some level of fear or concern, the last planning commission discussion included some important questions that challenged the adopted position, or seemed a adopted position of many commission members working to eliminate STRs. We appreciate this movement from a few of the commissioners to consider a broader perspective that includes benefits to local businesses, tourism, property owner rights, and benefits to neighborhoods in our city. With this in mind, review of the planning commission docs, since our last meeting reflected continued focus on cities with restrictive STRs. Walla Walla was a focus in the last meeting, and several citizens provided comment and data concluding no relevant similarity between Walla Walla and Gig Harbor. Today, we see five additional cities listed by the commission as examples on how to restrict or effectively eliminate STRs using primary residence language. What isn't listed or discussed are the many other cities with reasonable and fair STRs that do acknowledge the benefits of STRs to their community. It appears we're at a point with the planning commission and community agree there are no facts or data relevant to Gig Harbor that support any STR impact to housing availability, affordability, crime, or neighborhood character, health, safety, or welfare. We know this because the commission clarified a reform to prevent future problems, and also made it clear they are looking for justification to restrict STRs by borrowing STR language of other cities. We're hopeful Gig Harbor will tailor STR regs in a way that aligns with facts and data of our city and to meet the needs of our community, not just a few personal interests to eliminate STRs. We need to consider the benefits to tourism, local business, property owner rights, neighborhood character in the city. If we don't, then we don't have local representation. Outline are some of the key points for your consideration. If the current definition of STRs offered by the commission is used, approximately 90% of the STRs will be eliminated. The reason is that nearly all of the STRs are single-family dwellings, use the second homes or vacation homes. This is not fair, reasonable. Fair regs are supported. We also believe reasonable limits on the number of STRs has support, but regs need to be tailored to the facts and data of Gig Harbor. Example only, if the current ratio of STRs to our population is about 0.08%, a ratio based on population may be workable and can be evaluated every two to three years. The next point is collaboration with the community. Though many of the commissioners appear to want to eliminate STRs with restrictive language, we appreciate the inquiry and questions from a few commissioners to help bring more light to the STR regs. Again, I and others are willing to work with the commission on fair and reasonable regulations. We thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. So, now I see no more hands, so I am closing the public comment portion of the meeting at this moment. So, moving along on the agenda, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Carl, for, to lead another study session on short-term rentals.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good evening, commissioners, members of the public. Thank you for attending. And thank you for those comments. Very informative, and we appreciate all of the written comments that we have received over the past couple of weeks as well. And so, the public knows we have provided those to the planning commission, although they're not in the official record, because they're not in an official, weren't submitted in an official comment period. They are still considered by the planning commission, and so, your, your, your work has not gone in vain. Well, planning commission, yes, we are here again tonight to talk about short-term rentals. As you all know, staff has prepared a few exhibits for you that we put into your packets for the evening. We also received some follow-up emails and information from a couple of the commissioner, commissioners after the last meeting, and we took those to account as well. We also provided them in the packets for the rest of the commissioners to see what their fellow commissioners are thinking after the last meeting. Our last meeting was, was very good, very robust. I think we covered a lot of ground. We didn't get all the way through what we wanted to get through, and that was, if you'll recall, the table. So, we're eventually here. We're gonna pick up where we left off on that. But I wanted to just call to your attention a few things that, that staff has worked on since that last meeting. Some of it covered in the memo, and then, a couple other pieces that I'll refer to after I get through that. But please note in the memo that we, staff went and did do some, some research through our comp plan to see if we could find sufficient support for a few of the regulations that the planning commission has been desiring to include in the, in the regulations. And as you'll see or have seen in the memo, we're struggling to find that governmental reasoning or that governmental reason support for a couple of these regulations. And, and that is the proximity regulation, so that 150 feet, the, limiting the number of rooms that can be offered by short-term rental renters, and, and establishing that limit or cap on the maximum number of short-term rentals. And, and this memo is not meant to be argumentative, and by any means is just meant to really be factual in what, you know, staff's findings were. So, you know, our, obviously, then, our recommendation is that the imposition of such regulations should be thoughtfully considered at this point. And we can certainly have some more discussion around that here after, after I finish presenting the memo. I'm happy to hear commissioners' thoughts, and I suppose we'll probably get into it in the, when we start looking at the table as well. So, staff prepared this memo with, in, including several provisions that we found in the comp plan that speak to historic character of our neighborhoods in our downtown area, but don't necessarily support more, any, any more than the sort of architecture. It really refers, it really, our, our comp plan is geared more towards the, what the design manual desires, more so than sort of the feel. It's more about the look rather than the feel in those areas. And so, you know, that, that's kind of what we're struggling with, and we're sort of struggling to find that, that support. So, where staff has gone with this and thinking about a solution or sort of a balanced approach here is this idea of, of primary residence. We've talked a lot about how residences are, how the residents would be, oh boy, I'm losing the, lost my train of thought there. Give me, give me one moment here to reset myself. Sorry, owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. I couldn't come up with the owner occupied piece. Sorry about that. And this idea of pre-primary residence, and we presented this at the last meeting, this idea of going to, to primary residence, and we're trying to make a case in our memo here for why we think that primary residences is satisfies both sides of this, of this sort of argument. And that is, we're, we're trying to achieve a way of, of regulating short-term rentals. We're trying to find a way to curb a proliferation or an out-of-control proliferation of short-term rentals in the future, and while at the same time trying to allow for short-term rentals within the city, but, but only, but a reasonable number of them, right? And that's, that's kind of what we've been struggling with, I think, here. That's sort of at the root of the struggle. We think that going with the primary residence definite, as our, as sort of as our definition of where a, or allowance for where a short-term rental would, would be, or could be cited, achieves that balance. And we've seen that other cities, and we've listed a few here, have gone with that same model using primary residence. Primary residence gives us an opportunity to measure how, how many nights or days someone has to live within that home throughout the year, and it gives us some, something we can sort of grab onto as far as the, the, the proof for how, the proof that a resident would have to, that an operator would have to provide in order to show that they've been in that home for that many days or nights. So, we've cited these federal regulations from Internal Revenue Service that gives us some guidelines. Of course, we don't want to use that as our, you know, as our definition necessarily, and we can define it how we want. It, it makes, maybe makes sense, and it makes it easier to define it as the primary residence would be where you're residing for most of the year, which would be, you know, as we've stated here, 183 days. Our idea, our thought behind that is that someone would only then be able to rent out that whole house for less than half of the year, right? And they might be able to rent out rooms throughout the year. They would be able to rent out their accessory dwelling units anytime during the year, which we've sort of already covered previously. So, it does offer flexibility, but because it's a primary dwelling, because it's their primary residence, it requires that they're living there for the majority of the year, which means that they're invested in the neighborhood. The, the neighbors know them, would know their names, so they're still, they're still neighbors in that sense. And they're only allowed to have one primary residence by law, and by definition, if we defined it the way that we've proposed it here. Therefore, you wouldn't end up with that sort of proliferation whereby an LLC or a group of people get together and buy multiple homes and start renting them out as a, as their business. Chair, I might stop there for a moment, because I, I would guess that this is gonna generate some discussion. So, maybe we stop here and talk about this and see if we can, if I can answer, if Jeremy and I can answer any questions about this first, and then, and then we can move into some of the other items, if that's okay.
Sure. Mr. Krosick, go ahead.
Okay, Carl, my first question is, relates back to some of the comments that came up in the citizen comment period, and that's the question of affordable housing. Are we not required by the state to make efforts to provide affordable housing within the city of Gig Harbor?
We are, yes.
Okay. And then, my second, well, it's not really so much a question, but I think in your memo, you cited 3.13.3, "Provide reasonable guidelines and standards for the citing of home-based business and residential neighborhoods. Ensure that home-based businesses do not alter or impact the residential character of neighborhoods." I think that is a very good statement to support the regulations that we are looking at drafting here.
The, and that, that's a very good point, Mr. Krosick, and I, the reason that we included that there's, and I didn't, I didn't do a good job of presenting this idea, but the reason we included that there is that we currently allow home occupations within our residential neighborhoods. Short-term rental, while not a home occupation, is very closely aligned with, with a home occupation, as are bed and breakfasts. Now, they're all permitted a little bit differently. The processes for having one of those things in your home is a little bit different, but the idea behind each of them is kind of, is largely the same, and that is that they are not supposed to impact the residential character of that site, which is used primarily as a single-family residence, nor is it allowed to impact the character of the neighborhood. And so, the argument there, I suppose, is that a short-term rental does not necessarily, should not and shall not change the character of that single-family residence. It's still being used as a single-family residence either way.
But only if it's their primary residence?
Well, yeah, only if, only if it meets the definition of short-term rental, which would include that it needs to be the primary residence, that needs to be the operator's primary residence, and then, we define primary residence in some manner, and we provided an example of that.
So, with home occupations, is, is it allowed in residential neighborhoods to just use, convert a home to a business and not live there?
They still need to live there. The, the primary use of that residence is still a single-family home, and the, and the person who owns the business must reside in that home, much like an accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit. The, the owner of the property must live in either the home, the primary residence, or they must live in the accessory apartment, but they still have to live there. It still needs to be their primary residence.
So, so folks that have an ADU, they, they still have a single address, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Bradbury, go ahead.
This issue of primary residence, I think, is absolutely critical in defining the entire rest of the regulation. It's one we've heard a lot of public comment on. And I am not exactly clear why that focus on a primary residence is in the best interest of the city.
Can you elaborate?
Well, the, the, the whole idea, and, and the public comments have expressed this, by having it be a primary residence requirement, the whole idea then becomes to greatly restrict the number of STRs that can potentially be in the community. We have also put forth a 150-foot rule as another methodology of potentially limiting the number in the city. I personally am in support of this basic and less restrictive ordinance as we can devise. We, we simply do not have the internal capability to enforce a lot of the provisions that we've been talking about, and this being one of.
If I could just respond briefly, Commissioner Bradbury, those are all very good points. And, you know, the, the, in, in staff's mind, utilizing the primary residence, while it will restrict the proliferation of short-term rentals throughout the city, and when I say proliferation, I mean. And when I say proliferation, I mean companies coming in and buying up homes or, you know, conglomerate of. Property owners buying up homes and, and using them for income rather than as short, rather than as single-family residences. The primary residence idea would, would, would restrict that. But what it would allow is for anybody who owns a home in the city. That calls that home their primary residence, it would allow them to have. To utilize short-term rental income on a limit, a more limited basis. It wouldn't be a full, you know, it's not for three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But, well, and it could be if they were renting an ADU or renting a couple of rooms out in the, in the home, if they wanted to go that route. But it would still allow for short-term rentals throughout the city. But it would just not. Be the same as a, a typical resort town or a college town. If somebody, one of the public comments that we've heard about, you know, in the comparison to Walla Walla, which I get that comparison. It's a college town. It is different. We're not Vale either, you know, we're not, we're not Hilton Head or, or a place like that necessarily. But we could be ten years from now. We don't really know. So, but the idea behind using that primary residence in staff's mind anyway is to find that balance between those competing interests. And, and those competing interests being folks who want to see these everywhere, all over the place and kind of. Let it, let it go with very, very limited regulation. And folks who really want to preserve the character of their neighborhoods and preserve the character of Gig Harbor.
Is there any way to approach this through a permitting process? After all, as we've established, this is a business operating in a residential district.
Yes, and we would, Commissioner Bradbury, we do propose, oh, and to your other point. This, this proposition, the primary residence in staff's mind eliminates the need for the one hundred and fifty-foot rule. It would eliminate the need for limiting the number of rooms that would be rented or could be rented. And it would eliminate the need for, shoot, the third item, sorry. The cap, it would eliminate that need as well. Because it's, it's limiting in and of itself because it has to be a person's primary residence. They can't have multiple homes. And to your, to your question about permitting, yes, we would still, we would still recommend that we, that we use the type-two. Land use permit. To permit short-term rentals within the home. And we would still recommend a business license with an annual renew, renewal. Just like we were talking about last week when we were talking, when we were going through the table. We'd have an annual renewal of a business license for a short-term rental. And we would have an affidavit-type system that the operator, primary residential owner. Would have to fill out at that annual checkpoint to get their renewed license.
Okay, Commissioner Griner.
First, I want to thank Carl and Jeremy for their input based on our last meeting. And, and the staff memo really hits on a lot of the things that we were kind of fighting. Wrestling with is probably the best way to put it. I think one important thing that seems to me to keep being overlooked is part of what we're trying to, everyone. Well, I shouldn't say everyone. A number of people seem to think that we're trying to, you know, do, make things very restrictive. And that that's unfair. And I see part of what we're trying to do is to protect those people who are currently doing it properly. There are quite a few people who are doing it really in the, what's the word I'm trying to say? You know, they're doing it properly, they're doing it well, clearly there are people who like it, they're following the guidelines of the city. And, and they should be commended for that. I, I see part of what we're trying to do is to encourage, is to actually support those people who are doing it well. And to prevent those people who really are not doing things appropriately. So I just wanted to make a note of that. And the other thing I wanted to say is that the primary residence definition that you have here. I really like it and I really like that it does, like Carl, you just talked about. Get rid of that hundred and fifty-foot thing and, you know, some of those other issues that we were again, you know, going over. I, I like that it solves a lot of different problems that, that we were having trouble with. So anyway, I just wanted to, to bring that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Griner. And, and, you know, to, to that point. A little bit, you know, you, you talked about something else I was going to talk about later, but I'll, I'll touch on it now. And that was something that Commissioner Brown had sent an email on, and I had a little back and forth with him over it. And I think there is, was, there was some confusion and maybe there still is about. The idea of what we have, so what we have out there, and I think, you know, and I think the planning commission is, has gone down that road. Saying, hey, we've got people out there who were doing these things already, and we don't want to preclude them from being able to continue to do those things if they've been doing it right. And we should say, if they come in under these current regulations. And so I just want to clear that air a little bit, that, 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 that's a great point. And right now, we know we've got about four or five conditional use permits out there. So we have about five short-term rentals operating in the city under a conditional use permit, so they, they are legally operating. Per our old code prior to the moratorium as a lodging level one, but what we used to consider as a short-term rental. They will continue to operate under that conditional use permit regardless of these regulations. So they would operate as a conditional use until which time as they stop. Operating as a short-term rental for up to a year. Then their conditional use permit would go away, and that would, property would revert back to just a single-family residential home. Someone could come in under our new process, of course, and apply to be a short-term rental again. The folks who have a business license out there who don't have a conditional use permit are technically operating illegally. They haven't gone through the city's process to operate as a short-term rental. Now, those are the folks who I think you're, you're speaking to, Commissioner Griner, who are operating in good faith. And they were issued a city business license, and in some cases, the ones that we're talking about, it's, they told us it was going to be a short-term rental. I think at the time, we just didn't know what a short-term rental was. Or we weren't really, we just didn't really notice that that's what they were doing, you know? We, we have a lot of home occupation permits come through that we approve. Excuse me. Now, those folks would have every opportunity to come in and apply for the short-term rental permit. That type-two permit that we've been talking about, go through the process, legalize their business. Get their business license, and then they would be a fully conforming short-term rental under our new regulations. Those that are operating without short-term rental licenses or a conditional use permit out there right now could likewise come in. And, you know, if they don't, then they're subject to code enforcement. And same with the folks who have just a, only a business license, they would be subject to code enforcement. We, we maybe would be more lenient on those that have a business license that's valid. But still, they would have to come in under the current regulations. So, uh, so I just wanted to clear that air up, that, you know, there's, there's every opportunity for these thirty or so. Forty or so short-term rentals that are operating out there to come in under these regulations and, and get legitimized. And become conforming. So Jeremy, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in. So I went through our, the table of all the business licenses and other approvals. And we had four short-term rentals currently operating with just the business license. So that would, and then five with the conditional use permits, so that'd bring us to nine total. That have some type of authorization to be operating out of whatever that total number is.
Right.
That we.
And Jeremy, of those, do you know, of, of those, do you know the ownership on them? Are they, are they mostly owned by? Property owners, or are you seeing that they're owned by LLCs or businesses, or what does it look like?
There were. So I used to break the numbers down. There was one that appeared to be a kind of out-of-state LLC. Four, or three other LLCs that were. The name was just associated with the business. Those ones like the waterfront and Parsonage, places like that. More traditional bed and breakfast style operations, and then the rest were just by individuals.
Individual taxpayer.
Yeah.
And that, and that was an answer to a question that Commissioner Saltus had, had posed to us. We wanted, that we promised that we would check on, so we're. To the best of our knowledge, Commissioner Saltus, that's what we know.
Well, that's, it's a, it's an improvement. Carl, every week we get better. Smarter.
That's right.
Can I add in here, Greg?
Greg. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Well, we got, we got this thirty number that's floating around. We, we hear it often. I think we also heard that the sixty and larger numbers are. Perhaps double-counted or overstated, so I'm thinking to my head thirty now is, is, is the number that we ought to kind of focus on. But if we go with this private personal residency category. I was going to ask you and Jeremy, Carl, again, just by putting that on it, you know, as a filter. I'm hearing that it's like, it takes out ninety percent of the potential STRs from the table. How do you reconcile that with the numbers you just kind of talked about?
Well, it's, it's tough, Commissioner Saltus, because we don't really, I mean, that's a number that people are telling us that, you know, would knock out ninety, ninety percent. Of those that are operating in the city now, but we don't really, we don't know that. Because the only ones that we can really, the only data that we really have that's real data is. Those nine that Jeremy just, just talked about. We have some others that we know used to operate, but they don't have a current business license. And, you know, when we say thirty, that's true, that's kind of the number that we've been playing around with. That's, I think, the number that the Gig Harbor Short-Term Real Alliance gave us. Our previous count was forty-four, and we've heard upwards of sixty to sixty-eight from some of these companies that do that work now. I think those numbers up above the forty-four, forty-five number likely include the livable boards, which we're excluding from this discussion. And so my thinking is that we're more in the, you know, the, the forty to forty-five range probably, more realistically. That said, again, I, I don't, I have no way of knowing. What these regulations will do to those folks who are not legally permitted at this point.
Well, it seems to me that perhaps, you know, and I'm not quite sure how this works in terms of the business of the commission, but. They've been recommending that we get together and have sort of a face-to-face meeting and, you know. It's be nice to have people, you know, show us the sort, the information that they're, they're, they're giving us some numbers. And if they could substantiate that eighty-nine point whatever percent of the, of the STRs were. Not really personal resident, would kind of be fall, would fall out if we applied this new category. Maybe a, a face-to-face dialogue could help that, and perhaps a couple of other issues. I don't, I'm not adverse to that idea of kind of getting together and. Hashing out some things, quote-unquote, face-to-face, but I don't sure how that applies to the way that we do business in the city.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, a, a good point. We, we don't have really a good venue for that. I mean, you know, aside from you holding kind of an open house type of, of, of format potentially. You know, the other thing I would caution us about is. The one, the, the folks who have reached out that want to have the face-to-face are the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance. And. I think we want to be careful that, that we recognize there are other voices in the community that also. Have provided comment and, and also have opinions on this. The Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance has, has, you know, provided a lot of information and, and they have a lot of passion. And they have a lot of energy. But I think we want to be careful about putting all of our, all of, all of our work in one, in sort of, you know, in one basket like that. I would also say. I would also say that. We've asked the Gig Harbor Short-Term Real Alliance for some data. You know, about their, about their membership. I mean, their membership is three hundred and eighty-some folks strong, I think. But many of them are not really in the, aren't in the city limits. There, I think it's a fairly diversified membership even across the country. And so. You know, I, I think that it's the planning commission's charge to do or to make a recommendation. Based on what you all feel is best for the city in the, you know, in, in the now and in the future. And if we, if we, I think if we get too wrapped around the axle on. Who the regulations are going to affect that are operating within the city currently. We, I mean, we, we could, we could, we could be, we could be at that point with any regulation that we're considering. And never get to a final recommendation or a final decision as a result. Because it's, it's going to affect somebody. I guess that's my point, Commissioner Saltus, is that someone is, is going to be affected. What we're trying to do is find some, some balanced solution that will work for the majority.
Thank you. Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, and, and I would, Bob, I would add to that, 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 you know, we have gotten, we, we've had public hearings. So, you know, we've had that part of the, the usual process, and we have had informal input. And, and certainly the alliances had. Opportunities since going back to, I think, last September. And, and up to as recently as yesterday to provide thoughts, and, you know, quite frankly, they provided input that has changed my perspective. And I think. All of our commissioners have reflected on all of the input from the, from the public. So I would agree with Carl that, that, you know, in my, in my gut, you know, sitting down with a, a group of folks, you know, it seems like a good idea. But I think it, it. And they have a one-sided interest in this, and, and we cannot exclude the rest of the public. And, and we have gotten some very passionate input. Including in the informal comment package that we got for this meeting. You know, from the public on the other side of the equation. So I, I think the opportunity has been there, and I, I think that all of the commissioners have processed that. And, and we have, as, as you have said yourself, every meeting we get smarter. I think the staff has processed the input, you know, from both sides, and, and we're working hard. You know, to try to get a good ordinance. I, I would, I would say that, that I'm, I, I'm frustrated that there continues to be a, a public misperception about. How or why we're doing what we're doing, or how we were chartered to do this. I mean, the, this has nothing to do, and you're just reflecting on one of the comments from this evening. Our, our work here doesn't anything to do with someone coming to a planning commissioner or de-planning commissioners and making a complaint about STRs. That is not what happened. And that is not how the planning commission operates. We were asked by the city council to write an ordinance and make a recommendation for an ordinance for the city of Gig Harbor. For city council to consider, just as we do with every other piece of work that we do. And this one was no different. And, and I am frustrated that that continues to be. A, a, a misperception, and I'm not sure how we can clear that up other than that repeated at every meeting. We established way back at the very beginning, as you recall, commissioners. That my very first question, when, when we began this process. That my very first question when when we began this process was, is there any commissioner that that thinks that STR should be banned outright in Gig Harbor? And we had a unanimous no. When that question was asked, and and that included the two commissioners that were not here this evening. So. I think we've been working hard to to try to to strike the proper balance.
Chair, Chair, I would add to that, too, that, you know, the 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 comment that we heard. May have may have also noted that the the reason behind even looking into regulations for short-term rentals was because of. Public complaints. And I think that's also been kind of a misperception out there. That's not necessarily true. There's. There's a perception that short-term rentals are on the rise in the community. That's really where this this came from. And we we know that we don't have complaints on the books. That's been something that we've researched and we've. We've talked about here at these meetings. But there there was a public perception that short-term rentals were on the rise in the city of Gig Harbor, looking around the country and seeing what's happening in other happening in other parts of the country. The city council determined that they didn't want that to happen here. And that's why they charged the planning commission with with looking into these regulations.
Yeah, and and. You know, that no one is comparing Gig Harbor, at least on the. The commission. To Wal-a-Wal. We're not saying we're Wal-a-Wal. We're not saying we're Kirkland. We are taking other examples who of towns that have ordinances and and saying, are there are there parts of? Are there parts of this that make sense in Gig Harbor? We're not trying to take Wal-a-Wal as ordinance and and overlay it on the Gig Harbor, because the the points are absolutely correct. We're not Wal-a-Wal. We're not a college town. And and we are a seasonal sleepy bird. That that happens to have a beautiful historic district in Millville. And and makes Gig Harbor special. So. Okay, well, why not, Commissioner Saltus, go ahead.
One quick question about one of Carl's earlier points. Looking for historic character of neighborhoods through the comprehensive plan. Yeah, I I thought that might be in there, Carl. I did the same kind of research you did. I don't think there is a whole lot there, a couple of points, but nothing overwhelming. However, you know, maybe it's more than the comprehensive plan that we need to think about, because I'm pretty sure. That a lot of people are here because of the charming historic character of our neighbors. So whether that's a strategic document of some kind within the city. I I would suspect that members of the council would share that kind of feeling as well. That's just a supposition on my part. But yeah, I don't know where it comes from and where the derivative might be, but I'm pretty sure that's a. A pretty important reason why people like to live here. So. Maybe we look, we look more broadly than the comprehensive plan. If that's something we want to embed in our. Report. I'll shut up now.
I think it's a very good point, Commissioner Saltus, and I I agree. I was I was a little surprised enough. Then Jeremy actually did most of that research. We were both a little bit surprised to not. Find anything sort of glaring. Come out of that. But I but I do think that the 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 way our code is set up and our the way our design manual works. It already, it does a good job of protecting those things. In its in its own way, but it does it. It's not so black and white as to as to say that these neighborhoods shall be such such a way. The 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 feel of them, I guess, you know, that's and that's it's it's just it's a different difficult thing to define, but I am surprised the the the. Comprehensive plan doesn't have more language about it.
Okay, well, let's let's go back and continue to drill down on this. Primary residence concept, because I think that. I I think that. There seems to be consensus and, you know, I am in favor of. Eliminating the hundred and fifty-foot. Requirement and and I believe that. That most of us feel that way and that we need to look at a. Different way of limiting. And we, you know, we got some input even from members of the alliance that, you know, that they agree that that there should be some limit. You know, on the on the total number of of SDRs, although. I don't recall anyone proposing a specific comment, but but. But I think that, as has been stated by a couple of y'all, that that. Using this primary residence. Could answer a lot of those questions and and create a self-limiting situation.
Well, I think I'm starting to trend a little bit northward Larry, Commissioner Bradbury's perspective. I really don't see this primary residence as being the kind of thing that we have will have the insight into. Whether somebody's staying there for ninety or a hundred eighty or a hundred eighty-seven days. And. I I'm in the back of my mind. Commission, I'm I'm a little concerned that. This it's it's so restrictive. That, you know, it may get ten or twelve. Or or something like that of these SDRs there, but the same issue comes down. Somebody. You know, some number of the what's out there working are not going to be primary residents. And. I I don't know, is it make us the worst, a better or worse city for knocking fifteen SDRs off out of the. Out of the inventory, because it seems to me if they reapplied. And they're not primary residences, then they would not be approved. If if this is the the new definition. So that reaplication is not a solution for someone that's, you know, doesn't doesn't qualify. So I I really think we need to think about what is it we really want to do? I mean, we. What's fair to the SDRs and what's good for the community? I think I'm kind of thinking this is a little too restrictive. I would add that that level of restriction opens us up to potential litigation as well.
If if and I I could respond to that a little bit in in talking with the city attorney about, you know, all of these regulations that we've been we've been talking about. Their office feels that this regulation or this using use of a primary residence is far more defensible. Than. The other regulations or the other. Ideas that we've come up with for limiting the number. And I'm talking about the hundred and fifty-foot rule. And I and a and an outright cap. On the number of licenses or permits that we could issue. They feel that the primary residence using utilizing primary residence as our. As our restrictive tool, if if you want to call it a restrictive tool. Is. Is something that that we can. So that can be supportable. It can be supportive.
Okay, Commissioner Kozic.
Yeah, I I do like the primary residence concept for all the reasons that Carl has outlined. And I think it's probably the most defensible strategy that we have come up with. But I do have one question, and that is with respect. To those people who are operating a non-owner occupied short-term rental. And have been paying their hotel motel taxes and have obtained a business license. Is there? Does the city legal staff provide any? Strategy or process by which those persons could be legalized?
It's difficult because they're not. They would not fall under what would be typical. When we change land use regulations, they would not fall under a non-conforming. Use, they would not fall under sort of a non-conforming. They wouldn't fall into a non-conforming category, because they wouldn't have been and haven't been legally established. Under our previous code, in our previous code, we said you had to have a conditional use permit. We are defining short-term rental as a lodging level one, and this is how we do it. Unless they have some thing from the city. Stating that, yes, we were established and at the time, here's how the city was doing it, and they can show us that. Documentation that the city was legally establishing short-term rentals under a business license. That would be the only way. That they would be able to continue operating. And and maybe somebody and maybe some of them have that. That's a possibility, and that happens sometimes where people say, no, no, no. Back in nineteen eighty-eight or nineteen ninety-something, this is how the city was doing it. And they can show us that documentation. And sometimes we find it on file in our archives or something. And then we consider them legally non-conforming, and they get to continue to operate under a legally non-conforming use until which time is they. Stop utilizing their site for that use. And then they would have to come in under our current regulation. So there is a possibility, Commissioner Kozic, that some of those people, some of those operators may have that ability. We just don't know. I just I have no way of knowing.
Okay, so the dilemma then that maybe we are facing here. Is that we either take an approach like we're looking at right now with respect to the. Primary residence. Approach. Or we run the risk of opening this up to anybody who wants to have a short-term rental. Is that what the, under whatever. Way they want to operate it? Is that the dilemma that we're looking at?
I well, I don't know if I would define it that way. We we still would have the ability to regulate if we if if we wanted to go back to the idea of owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. And limit. Limit it that way. I mean, we're we're we still will be able to have regulations in place about how they use. The land, how they operate their short-term rental. Those regulations don't go away because of this. This really just eliminates. That owner occupied versus non-owner occupied, those definitions which were. I think they were they were confusing, I think, to the public, and I think we were struggling with defining them. And. And it also does away with the need in staff's mind for other. Restrictive. Regulations. That. We've been counseled are are not necessarily the right way forward.
Okay, I I didn't, I think I didn't make my point in a very articulate manner there.
Sorry.
And. May maybe what I was trying to say, is there any? Is there any other way to prevent a proliferation of non-owner occupied short-term rentals in Gig Harbor, other than the approach that we're looking at here?
Oh. Okay, sorry, Commissioner Kozic. I I think you did articulate it well. I think I just I I took it the wrong way. In in staff's view. And from the research that we have done. And our understanding and all of the. Discussions that we have had with people, this seems to be. The best way. Is it the only way? I I don't know that for sure, but it's the best way that we have found. It seems to be. A very balanced approach. In our view. And, you know, Jeremy and I have had. Countless discussions about this. And when we finally kind of came to this realization, we thought, Jesus. You know, we we put all the problem, put all write all the problems down on a board, and it seems to solve. A lot of them. The one that it doesn't solve is, of course, those folks who are operating out there now who are non-owner occupied and aren't legally established. But again, I go back to. And. You know, I go back to the fact that whenever we're working on regulations, new regulations or changing regulations or zoning code. It's going to affect somebody. There's there's just that there there is no. There is really no way around that. I mean, we can try and minimize that effect or that impact as best we can. But. All we can do is what's best for the city.
Go ahead, Commissioner Saltus. You're muted, Bob.
I was thinking, Carl, maybe there's another another path here or maybe a twist to the path. That's what we need to know, a twist to the path. But there are a number of comments I I read on the letters that said things like. We have our residents and we have another STR in the community. I think there were more than. Two or three, maybe I'm I'm not sure the number, but I think I heard that a couple of times. So wouldn't would a twist be? If you had a, if you had a principal residence within the community. That was operating as an SDR, you could also have a extra STR. I mean, then you have people that are already invested in the community. They live here. They just happen to have two SDRs. Not just one. And so they I don't think it would, that would be it. Likely to get out of control. But it might accommodate a couple, a few more of the SDRs that are on the that are operating today. And. That'll be operated by local residents if you follow this principal residence. Rule. Just an idea I thought I'd throw on the table. Here to everybody else's. You got that far away look, Carl.
I'm I'm waiting. I'm waiting, Commissioner Saltus. I have thoughts, but I'm waiting.
Do you mean, Bob, that that? There would be a requirement that. An individual's has. At least one primary residence in Gig Harbor, and then they would be allowed to operate a second STR. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's what I that's where I was going. I I would comment with the restriction we're talking about with primary residents. The the idea behind that is a person can own their own home. Rent it out in its entirety for up to roughly six months, as we've been talking about. While they're out of town or for some other reason to help. With their. Cost of maintaining their property and paying their mortgage. The other kinds of SDRs that we're talking about would be considered for-profit enterprises. Where whoever owns them has the intent of earning an income from not supporting the primary residents. So. Is it the latter? The proliferation of that latter profit-making enterprise that we're talking about restricting? And if so, we need to be able to answer the question, why?
What do you think, Commissioner Griner?
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting there. Trying to listen and process through the whole thing, but. I I still like the primary residence thing. I I and I do think that at some point we have to have, we have to have some way to. You know, support the people who are already doing it properly and prevent. I I get uncomfortable with a company coming in and that whatever. Multiple owners having a property and and that it's rented out that way. I I'm not saying that correct. But an outside company owning something I do, I do like that somebody has to personally own it. Sorry, I I got off track and I don't know where I'm going with what I'm saying. So come back to me if you.
Okay, okay. Great, Commissioner Kozic.
Well, I think to answer the question is is of what are we trying to prevent here? I think there are several things that we're we're seeking to not have happen in Gig Harbor. First of all. I'm just speaking personally for myself. I do not want to see Gig Harbor turn into a resort community. There are resort communities in Washington that I'm familiar with. There were there are resort communities in Oregon that I'm also familiar with. That's a whole different situation than a residential community. Just has a different feel, a different. Set of priorities within the community that would change Gig Harbor forever. Second, I think if we get to a point where every other house in a neighborhood is a non-owner occupied short-term rental. You lose the sense of community within the neighborhood. Where I live, we as neighbors look out for each other. So if I see that somebody hasn't been walking their dog for the past couple of days, that raises a red flag in my mind. So if I see that somebody hasn't been walking their dog for the past couple of days, that raises a red flag in my mind. And I want to check on that person to find out what's going on. And I think. That a strong neighborhood community is also a safe neighborhood community. Because people are looking out for one another, because we know each other, because we know. We have interests that are in common. And when you've got a short-term rental to the left of you and to the right of you. You can't have that. It's gone. And I think you lose something in that that is very, very important.
Thanks. Yeah, one, one of the things that, that. Goes through my mind is, is with respect to the primary residence. Proposal is. When I, when I look back on, on some of the input that we have heard from, from the beginning. Um, one of the big ones was affordability. Um, you know, we, we heard from a woman who said that she has her primary residence and. And she rents it out and she rents it out as a whole house and she actually moves in and out into a friend's home. During the time that she's able to rent it and that provides the income. Um, I, I believe that she was one that had the, the loss of her husband. Uh, and so it provided the income that allowed her to keep her home. And so that's, that's a, that's a primary residence situation. We heard from a fisherman who had a primary residence and. Wanted to be able during the time that, that he was. Um, gone for the, the, whatever the number of months during fishing season to be able to, to rent out his, his home. Um, and that, but that would be his primary residence. The, we heard a, a passionate, some passionate input, you know, in the informal comments. About a woman who stridently stated that, that the alliance does not represent everyone that's a. That is a short-term rental owner in Gig Harbor. Um, she said, I do not. I, I am an owner occupied individual. Um, and I know, I think she gave at least two other examples of people that, that she was aware of that, that were doing the same thing. Um, I'm also aware of a, a home in my neighborhood that is uh, rented out and it is an, an owner. Excuse me, a primary residence. Um, that, that she rents out when. When um, she's, she travels. Um, so, so those. As, as you stated Carl, that any ordinance is going to impact somebody. And so um. I, I understand your. Larry and, and Bob, what you guys are saying and. The, the other thing is, and, and. I kind of want to get there. And, and yet there are. You know, there's so much data that says. You know, when, when a place becomes popular with, with S T Rs, they tend to increase over, over time. The. You don't have to get too far. Let's see. Up the hill from Millville. Um, to be in a much more affordable situation. Uh, to, to have a non-owner occupied S P R, S T R make financial sense. Um, in, in fact, there is one. Um, up on uh, I, up one of the roads and, and I've, I've seen on Airbnb, very nice looking thing on a relatively large piece of property and, and. You know, it looks like they, they do a great job with it. And um. I think we heard from then and that individual that it is, you know, admittedly an investment property. So. So. We, we know that there are people that, that they're. The source of all their income, they are investment people that buy and operate S T Rs and that's how they, they make their living. Um, and, and. So good for them. I don't have any problem with that. The, the, I guess one of the things I struggle with is the Millville concept and, and. Um, I, I found that Oxford study uh, very enlightening and I, I appreciate um, the alliance forwarding that to us and it was a good read. And it has a lot of good data. Um, and I think it does address a lot of the. Fear mongering and not in my backyardism and. Um, and so on, and, and so it's nice to see data. I don't think anyone. Questions that when people come to town. They're going to spend money. Um, and so, you know, part of that spending money is the city would get lodging taxes, you know, under any ordinance that we would propose, we would. You know, we want to tighten that up to ensure that anyone operating one of these is paying, you know, lodging taxes, just like the hotels have to. Um, but when you look at, you know, one of the things about the Oxford study is they talked about. Homes per hundred dot, or excuse me, homes per thousand, S T Rs per thousand. Um, and if you look at the, I don't know what the numbers are and I, I would, I would like. The staff to let us know how many houses. There are homes, homes. Individual, single-family homes in Millville. Because that's where the greatest concentration of S T Rs is. And so it would be nice to know what. The number per thousand in Millville is because I think we can look at that air D N A. Heat map and really see that. It doesn't look like. There is a. Either a current problem or a potential problem. In other areas of Gig Harbor. And so. To me, there's. And, and as has been pointed out. That, that the fabric of historic Millville and all of our little shops and our old houses. That's what makes Gig Harbor fun to visit. Um, when I have people out of, from out of town, we always walk downtown along the waterfront. I never take them up to uptown. Um, nobody wants to go there. Unless it happens to be a, a concert up there. So. So, you know, that's what it's all about. So um. So I, I. I struggle on, having said all that, uh, Larry and Bob, it to get to. An unfettered situation. Where. There's no. Controls in place whatsoever. And it's entirely up to. The bakeries of the market. To, to not end up like some of these other towns that, that. Things have become problematic over the course of years.
I thought one of the comments that was pretty persuasive. And having gone through last winter. And spring that never came. We, we have a somewhat limited. Window of when people really want to come. I mean, unless they have some, they're buying a house or visiting or whatever. But the window is, is fairly short here. In Gig Harbor. Uh, eh, as opposed to like San Diego or someplace that has year-round. Uh, attractiveness, if you will. I, I just, that kind of hit me is, you know, maybe that's somewhat of a control to unlimited growth. That it kind of, it kind of resonated with me. It, it just seems like if we ran the numbers, I'd like to really know. What the impact this would be to. The. What we estimate the impact to be on the S, S T R. Community if we did this personal residence. I mean. You gave it, Jeremy and, and Carl, you're starting to get, you know, dig out that data for us and. Make it, you know, making sense of it. But I don't think we really still know how many people would be put out of business. I mean, I don't think anybody can say that right now. And uh, and then the S T R Alliance said. Eighty-nine percent would not qualify. That's a pretty staggering reduction in S T Rs of the city.
Yeah, and, and again, that's just, you know, that's what the, the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance has told us, you know, so it's not. It's hard, it, it, it is hard to know. Without knowing and the, and the only way we would know is if we. You know, I, we'd have to put out a survey, I suppose. Uh, and even then we would have to sort of, you know, truth out each one, each one of those individually. And again, there's just no real way of knowing. You know, I, my. My philosophy with things like this, I think is that it, it's. Better to put in place what we think is right. And what, what, what we think is best for the city. Uh, and then monitor it, evaluate it. I mean, we, you know, sometimes you go back and make changes to those ordinances that. One of the reasons that we brought up Walla Walla. Is because of the process that they went through, which was that, just that, you know, they put something in place that they thought was right. They thought this was going to be the perfect solution. And next thing they knew, they had ninety-four short-term rentals in areas where they didn't want them. They had no, you know, they had no college. They had no housing for their college students anymore. Um, you know, they just saw, they saw, they had to put the brakes on, you know, what was it, Jeremy, from April to? October, I think their first ordinance was passed in April.
It was passed in August, so it was a much shorter time, timeframe.
August, October or something like that. And then they had to put the brakes on and they went right back to their ordinance and made immediate changes to it. Now, some damage had already been done at that point, um, as far as Walla Walla goes, if you want to call it damage, whichever way you're looking at it. In their mind, it was damaged and so they put the brakes on and, and made it, made a, a change. I don't imagine we're going to see something like that happen in Gig Harbor, but who knows? I would rather err on the side of. Of having a few less of these within the city and finding out that. We need more. And then going that way rather than, you, you know, you, it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle, as they say.
Uh, from the planner from Walla Walla that I spoke with about their process. It was a matter of weeks when they were already uh. Reconsidering the code, uh, after. The influx of permits came in, uh, as you said earlier, they had. Uh, ninety-four of their non-owner occupied units that got permitted in that timeframe, which. It's not to say we'd do the same thing here. But that's always the risk of. I guess opening it up all the way like that. Is it? Once those are in and permitted, you can't really. I mean, you have provisions for them to remain since they're legally permitted. So in Walla Walla, those ones. Uh, it was ninety-four. Active ones, uh, they're all non-conforming. And they'll be able to continue until they. I guess abandon their use, so. That's something to consider in all this.
And, and that's an important point because if we were to pursue. Uh, the personal residence approach. There are a number of active. S T Rs. Uh, profit-making S C Rs in the community. Uh, that because of the fines we're talking about, then come in. And want to be permitted, would have to continue to operate then, as, as long as they, they did operate. And then when that operation ceased. Then that S T R would no longer be able to be permitted again. Is that my understanding, Carl?
Yes.
So. Bob, it looked like you were about to say something.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Um. You know, I've. Said it before and I'll say it again, that there is a way we can get the data. We asked the alliance. They, they are referencing a very specific number of thirty-three. And, and. We are having very open discussions uh, here on a public forum and. We, um, we want data. Um, they have repeatedly indicated that they want us to make database decisions. And I totally agree with them. And, and so let's ask for the data. Let's come up, you know. Tell us what these thirty-three are. Who, who's the owner? How long have they been operating? Um, is it a primary residence or not? You, you know, do you have other S T Rs? And I, I don't. Um, that would help me understand. The. The scope. And I mean, that's, to me, all of that is critical data would be very useful for us to contemplate.
And I, I agree with that too Chair, but I, I would also just kind of come back to. The, the idea that. Well, and I suppose this is open to anyone who wants to provide us with data, I guess, um, just making sure that we're not. Just taking something from. Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance, not to say that their data is bad or wrong and, and they've been a, a good partner in this all the way through. Um, uh, but I want to make sure that, you know, others in the public. Who are paying attention also. Provide those, their information as they see it. I, I, I. Want to say. That we're. Well, where I would. Where, where I want to be, I guess, from staff perspective, just to, just to be frank. Is, you know, we're, I'm hoping to, hope, we're hoping to get this to a, a public hearing. Our second public hearing with planning commission. At the next planning commission meeting. If we are looking for more data, if, if, if planning commission needs more time. This schedule, uh, the schedule have to. Uh, be pushed. And likely we're going to have to ask counsel to um. To extend the moratorium on the lodging level one. Permit applications, which I'm not saying we can't do, I'm just, I'm, what I'm doing, I'm just stating the facts. And I think we're pretty close here, but I do understand that, you know. Planning Commission maybe feels it doesn't have enough information. I just would caution. Everyone that we may not be able to get that data. It just, I, I'm just not sure that we, we can. And even if we do get data from. From the public. We, we would have to somehow truth that out if we really want to know that it is. It is as, as it, as, as presented, not, not to say that we're going to get false data from people, but. If we're going to rely on it, then we would need some way of. Certifying it.
Sure. Well, um. Just a, a quick note on that is that, that. At, at least one person indicated. That, that they would rather have the moratorium extended than, than for us to. To uh. Rush this just to meet a, a self-imposed deadline.
Understood Chair.
Commissioner Griner.
Well, I think the other thing that we need to consider is that, you know, we're giving a recommendation for what we think it should look like. I mean, then it's open to public comment. Then the city council evaluates it and, you know, I mean, they can either take it or they can not like it. Or they could have us go back and look at it again. I just think that. Uh, it feels like we're thinking that what we come up with is. Going to be a hundred percent agreed on and is going to be, you know, the final thing and I'm. I mean, that's a possibility, but it's also a possibility that the city council would not. Follow our recommendations. I, I don't know, but I think that. You know, we're, we're trying to do something so it's perfect and I do think that there still are a whole lot of considerations. By other people than just us and I think we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, excellent point.
You know, I concur with that.
I think one of the things we could do is, is even present two options to. To city council. With. With. Because I think this is the big sticking point. One option is primary residence. And one option is not. And, and I think a lot of the other stuff we've already hashed out. And I'm just looking here on my computer, we would, could go back to the table or go through your, you know, your memo. Um, and, and try. Because then that, then what would follow? Uh, Commissioner Griner is exactly where you stated, there'll be a public hearing. because then that then what would follow, uh, Commissioner Gray is exactly what you stated, there'll be a public hearing, people will be able to voice their opinions. Uh, we'll we'll then take that that input. Um, and then we will send something on to council. And then council is gonna go through the same process as well. So, um, because I don't have any idea where any of the council members stand on on uh on this. But um, I've always felt that our job is to die to try to deliver the best work product. Uh, because, you know, the council has a lot on their plate at all times. And so that's why I appreciate the time that that we've put into this.
So if we if we went down that road, Chair, that would require, I suppose, two ordinances. Um, and and that in in some ways, two sets of regulations, I guess, that we would be presenting to the public uh, for 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 public comment at the upcoming public hearing that council is going to hold.
I think that I saw, well, I know that I did, one one of the cities had done such a thing. They, and it might have been Walla Walla, where they presented. I and I don't remember what the 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 differences were between the two, but they they did. One of the cities anyway, had two ordinances and gave gave an option to their city council. You know, in in their process, and I'm I'm sure I'm remembering that correctly. But even if they didn't I I don't see a problem because I would think that ninety percent of it would be the same.
I I I think so. That's what I'm trying to run through in my mind at the moment is what all the other differences would be. I think I think largely we're talking about what the definition of short-term rental is. Uh, and the but the one outlier in that would be for non-owner occupied short-term rentals, then would we want more stringent regulations? Again, the reason that the primary residence works so well is that it it all but guarantees that the home is going to be kept up, uh, because the folks are living there. That's that's their home. And they're accountable to their neighbors, at least most people are, not all, not all folks are, but most people are. Um, and I and I and the argument to that, of course, is that short-term rentals by their very nature are pretty well-kept most of the time and need to be because they rely on they rely on their their comments, you know, the comments in those on those sites like VRBO and Airbnb. I mean, all of us have stayed in these places and you go and read the comments to make sure that people aren't saying, yeah. You know, there were chicken bones under the couch or something like that, you know, so so they they by their nature, they do keep them up, you know, and I I so I would, I would, I would make that argument for them, but as far as neighborhood character goes and being a part of your community. The primary residence get all but guarantees that that's going to happen. I don't I don't know. So if we if we if we were to write two ordinances and present them. I suppose in some ways, we would be asking the community to pick. Right? And that would be sort of what Planning Commission would be doing with this public hearing is to say, here's two ideas. What do you think? And then based on that, I suppose, the recommendation to council would be either one of them based on what we hear from the public. Or both of them, because we're still, it's a split decision in some ways, I guess. I I would rather us be in a place where we are feeling like, you know, this, this is the way forward. Um, but again. And and I agree, I see the, you know, I see, I see the conundrum and Jeremy and I see it too. And we haven't been able to produce the data that that would sway the commission or help the commission one way or the other in making this decision. And you know, it's just difficult to get that data, you know, the well, I'm looking at the table right now, and number fourteen is demand for short-term rentals. How many days per year of Gig Harbor short-term rentals being rented on average? Do we need an estimate of how many days until uh we'd be rented as part of the application? You know, then and we and we say that this information is just not at our fingertips. We don't know how many days an operator plans to rent their short-term rental for, you know, we can ask, we can ask people for that kind of thing. But it's ne- I would say nearly impossible to quantify.
Greg, I comment a couple of things. I I I agree, Carl, there's a lot of things we had in our list table that we're asking for data, and I think that we just ought to minimize that kind of thing, because I mean, it just, it it puts everybody in a bad position. We you, we don't have the data, they may not have the data. And asking people to throw that in there is, it's like, you know, how many days of the year are you gonna be at your house? I mean, heavens, nobody, people may not know that, they may not look what their rentals are gonna be like, they may not know much they're gonna charge you. Depend upon the time of year, you get a cheap rate in March and an expensive rate in August, and it's all over the map, I'm sure. Let me go back to one thing about the the impact, do we can, we need to at least present to the council our estimate of the impact to the community to if we went with this pri- primary residence. We gotta have some kind of, you can't take a recommendation to the boss and tell him, here it is, and I don't know what the impact is. I mean, we have to have at least a ballpark idea of uh how many um, STRs may be affected by this new regulation. And I don't know how we get it, Carl, but we've got to get, we gotta guesstimate it or do something because it's critical. If it affects five STRs. One thing, it affects twenty, that's a lot of business base that gets eroded. So um, how we get that, I don't quite have the answer for, but I think we need to give something with our recommendation that says, here's the pros and cons. And one of the cons is is this. Uh, one of the pros is that. So I I guess, Greg, I would also say I would propose, we get whatever we give them, we give them one recommendation. And if that's not what they think is the right one, then Carl needs to get ready to build, you know, go to Plan B. And I'm sure he he's had experience doing that. But to the best of our ability, we ought to at least, you know, if we can come to near consensus or a a majority vote, then we ought to give what our majority thinks is the right answer here. And if you're in the minority, well, you know, you had a chance to say our piece and let's just get it done.
I I concur with Bob's assessment there. The primary reason for data is to assess the impact, which we know there is gonna be one with any decision we make. We need to, we need to have an idea of what that is. I would guess that what happened in Walla Walla is they put out their their first uh regulation. And you had a whole lot of uh STRs that had been occup- occupied and operating in the city, quote illegally. And now they suddenly came in and put in all their applications to operate legally. And then at that point, the city council and and the planning commission and others knew they had a problem. And it would certainly behoove us to have enough information to avoid that same kind of problem.
I would also, I would, I would note too that, you know, that and I I understand that we don't want to affect, um, you know, a large percentage of those folks who are operating in the city right now. I and I and I understand that, I, you know. I would be a a horrible um, situation, you know, I get that for some people who've made this investment, they're relying on that investment um in some manner, I, you know, I I do get that. While at the same time, I think about what our charge is here or what what problem we're trying to solve or what problem we're trying to prevent, I guess I should say, rather than solve, right? And that and that the prevent, the prevention problem we're trying to prevent is a future where we have a large majority of short-term rentals taking up city blocks. Um, and making those folks who are still living on those city blocks in their family home uncomfortable because they don't have neighbors, you know, that's, I think that's, that's one of the issues that has been presented. Now, whether that, whether that contingency will come true, we don't really know. It could, I mean, we and we're seeing it on a couple of streets downtown where we've got multiple folks who we know want to have short-term rentals or have applied for them. And the, you know, the the solution to that is something that still is that that is balanced, where we're still allowing a lot of people to utilize their homes as short-term rentals. But we're minimizing the density of, we're minim- minimizing the density of them or the perception of density of them in that we wouldn't, we don't want a lot of non-owner occupied investment properties within the city. I mean, that's, that's where this discussion really started. That's, that's where we initially came from when we first started talking about this. Jeremy and I believe that utilizing a primary residence is part of the definition for short-term rentals will will do that, it will balance this. Um, it will impact some people. I and I, you know, again, I I don't know that we'll, that we have, that we have that, that we can get that number or know that for sure. Um, who and how many it's going to impact. We will find out, I suppose. Um, and there again. We're gonna get better, we're gonna get more and better data after we impose regulations and start permitting short-term rentals. In two years' time, we'll have really good data on short-term rentals in the city.
Well, that presumes that the people that are would not be operating legally. Well, I I, you know, there's gonna be people that, you know, they say, well, I can't get my permit, I'm just gonna keep doing what I'm doing. And we're gonna have to, the city is gonna have to do some code enforcement. I would suspect that's gonna have to be done to get compliance with it with this new definition.
Yes. That'll definitely have to happen, yeah. No, there's no, no, no doubt about it.
Well. Well, let's uh so I I I think if we go around the table and just cast a vote now and not not locking anyone into it. As we continue to contemplate specifically with the requirement of using the description of primary residence and and limiting STRs in primary residences. Would you vote yea or nay, Commissioner Bradbury? You're you're muted. Larry, you are muted.
Sorry, I said I'm not convinced the primary residence is the best approach at this point in time, so I would say.
Okay, Commissioner Gray.
I I like the primary residence. I think it solves a lot of issues that we had before, so I I would be for using that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Krosak.
Yeah, I would go with the uh primary residence definition. I say that with some regrets because I really wish there was a way that we could uh uh get those people in who uh uh have at least made a good faith effort to uh comply by getting a business license. But from what Carl has said, it doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so I'm gonna have to go with the primary residence definition.
Commissioner Soltes.
I am, I'm not convinced the primary residence is not gonna be unduly uh restrictive and and prohibited. So I would say I'm uh, I'm against it unless I get some data that says it's really not gonna knock out much a a lot of the STRs. So I'd like more data, but I'm initially, I'm not in favor.
Okay. Well, my feeling, I I'm in Commissioner Krosak's corner is that I like the, I like the approach. I like the research that the staff has done. Um, I I would like us to try to sort out some way for those folks that currently have just a pure investment property. You know, as a non-owner occupied uh, that that they, if they've been doing it on the up and up, you know, and paying their taxes and all and all that, and they have their business licenses. That that there would be a way to allow them to continue that, but restrict them otherwise. So future, future would be primary residence only. But um, current folks allow them to continue. And if we could, if we could achieve that, uh I think that that would be close to nirvana for me.
Is there a way, sorry, is there a way to have some type of appeal process built into what we come up with that that would allow those people to at least present an appeal that could be considered instead of a blanket rejection? I don't know if that would solve the problem, but maybe, and and I don't even know if that normally is in city code.
Uh, in an appeal, in in what, in what way? What would they, what would they be appealing?
They would be, instead of blanket being kicked out of it, they could argue that they've operated, you know, legally, they've had a business license. They have good reviews and all those type of things, so there should be special consideration based on their historic performance.
Grandfather clause.
I was trying not to say that particular word, actually, which is not.
Yeah, there was a public comment that that I don't think I understood the I I don't want, you know, the inside joke, it's just that, you know, Carl's, um, that that's not a term that that is used and in the in the writing of these codes is is why we we all joke about that.
Right.
Because Carl has reminded us multiple times is there, you know, there is no such thing.
But I'm I'm just saying, if there was a way that that, you know, people could always apply for a maybe appeals not the right word, but special exemption, or I I don't know what it would look like, but that might allow us to at least consider those people who have been operating in good faith, doing things the proper way and with stellar track records.
Carl, are those kinds of provisions existent in other ordinances?
Provisions to allow someone to continue to operate after a regulation has changed?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's a non-conformity, and that's what I was describing earlier, but they have to be legally established in order to be considered non-conforming. So you're either, you're either a conforming use, you're a non-conforming use, those are the only two types of uses that we have. And if you're conforming, that means that you, well, or non-conforming, that means that you were legally established under the regulations in place at that time. Um, if you're, well, and if you're non-conforming, that means that you were legally established under the regulations that were in place at that time. And those regulations have changed. So you're 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 vested sort of, right, to that old regulation at and until which time you stop the use for a certain period of time, and then you lose that non-conforming right. Now that, you know, there are Jer, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to look into this a little bit, you know, I I know in um In Walla Walla, I believe what they. Did is that they, in their ordinance. They said that all of those. Uses, all of those permitted. Non owner occupied. Short term rentals that came in and got their permits during that period of time will be continued. Will be allowed to continue. They didn't say that they were non conforming, I don't think, and Jeremy, I could be wrong, but I, I thought I'm pretty sure they didn't use that actual language. They just kind of put it into the regulations as. Those uses will be allowed, but we will never allow any more. Non owner occupied. Uses in the city will never, will never permit another non owner occupied. Short term rental.
One of the problems that exists now is we have a moratorium, so people that are currently operating. Outside of existing ordinances. Cannot come in and become established. As I believe lodging level one.
Right.
So therefore, if we were to establish the primary residence criteria. They would just simply be out. Am I correct?
As a non owner, yeah, if they're not, if it's, if they cannot show that it's their primary residence, correct? I guess, I guess where I'm coming from here is that, you know, is there a way to allow those folks who are just operating under a business license currently, which I think is, how many did you say, Jeremy? Four?
Yeah, we have four and. Not certain how many of them are currently operating.
That's the other thing we don't really know.
One of them might. Be a traditional style bed and breakfast. So they would be able to get in through the. Lodging level one or bed and breakfast.
Yes, we might be talking about, you know, three. Properties, maybe even less. I mean, we'd have to look at their business licenses to see when they're even going to expire.
Mr. Krosick.
Well, I think what Carl said with respect to the wall of all approach is the one that I'd like to. Delve into a little bit further is that if there would be some way that within the ordinance, we could define. Reasonable efforts at compliance. And, and. Put those people in a position where they could be allowed to continue to operate. I would really like to see that.
Yeah. The, the, the. The only trouble we have, or you know, the trouble I see with that is. That we have people who have come in under a conditional use permit. They've gone through the process of getting a conditional use permit, which is not. Not an easy process. It takes time. Effort, money. And. It would seem unfair to. Allow others. To sort of just get a. A blessing from the city, for lack of a better word. To continue to operate. Their establishment. Having not gone through that same process. That's, that's the only fear I have now. If, if it's, if it can be found that those operating with only a business license. Received their initial business license at a time when the city was deeming. A business license, the. The mode of establishing that use at that time. Then that's different than, than they, you know, than they, they could be a non conforming. Use, and that's, I mean, that, that is the way that it. Typically works in land use and we make changes to regulations, like I said before, that, that's how it generally works and they would have. They would have their right to, to prove that to us. We have a non conforming review process. So very simple permit. It's a type one permit. Very easy process administrative. Review and administrative approval. And they could do it concurrent with their. With a, with a short term rental. Type two permit. Well, I suppose they wouldn't even have, they wouldn't need that. They would just need their non conforming review. And a, and a renewed business license, I suppose.
Well, why don't we do this? So we can, I, I don't know that. Any further input or discussion is, is going to change anything on this. At this point. And right now we have a, a three to two. Majority. That says. We prefer the primary residence. With a footnote. That, that, and. That at least two of us. Would agree and maybe Commissioner Gray, are you with two? But you can chime in that if we can find a way to, you know, to, to. Embed in the, in the ordinance a way for the people that have been operating, you know, above board with a license, paying taxes, you know, so on. Proving that they, that they've had this, you know, STR business. That we bake that into the ordinance. And. Then we can move on to some of the other things and, and. And, and with that. Then. We can potentially still meet the timeline of trying to have a public. Hearing two weeks from now. Because you could, you could get out the ordinance. It's either going to have that, that. Footnote. Or it's not. And. It's three to two that even without the footnote that, that the ordinance has the primary residence requirement. So. I, I just feel in my heart that you guys are going to be able to work this out, you know, some way. To. To find a solution. To what we have proposed. For the folks that have been operating. Above board. So. Does everybody feel okay if we move on from that and, and start, you know, try to plow through? The rest of what we have on the table, because I think a lot of this stuff is going to become. A lot quicker.
Yes, I, I think we should move on. I don't think there's too much that we have left to do, though. That's good.
Yep, time to move on.
And I'm comfortable, Greg, with what you just described. I, I would. Be fine with that.
Okay. All right. And I think I saw Bob nodding somewhere along the line. He's outnumbered anyway.
Nodding in a good way.
Okay, so Carl, take it away and let's see what we can, okay, how much of this stuff we can get through quickly.
All right, so looking at this here, we've got number, let me blow this up so it's bigger for everybody. Oh, that's not either. Zoom in.
It was okay what you had there just a second ago.
Oh, it was?
Yeah. You had, you had that single page on there.
Oh, maybe just, does this look okay like this?
You just jumped to multiple pages, but. There, there you go.
Okay. So back up here on number four, I'd kind of jumped ahead of you guys when we were talking earlier, so we're going to remove this hundred and fifty foot requirement. I think that, I think we've kind of got some consensus on that, or should I say? If. If we use primary residence.
I would say just strike it.
Strike it regardless.
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody on board with that idea?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so moving on, then we tackled all of these eliminate, eliminate. So. This one. I'm just going to say, see, I've got a note written. In my notes that staff is going to look into finding a way. We're going to perform an analysis on that one.
Okay.
Greg, if I could make a quick comment there.
Of course.
Just a. A, a note from my perspective, at least, I'm not so much interested in, you know. Getting people that are operating illegally. Off of the STR list. I'd like to get all the ones that are operating today. Legally or, or not legally. Into our system. It's kind of like, you know, a free return day at the library. You know, your, your optic is to get something, get the book back. And get operating again. It's not to. Find, you know, get a lot of fine money from the people. It seems to me like. If these people, these SDRs are operating and there's really not a problem with them. That we ought to give them an opportunity to. Get their ore in the water and, and do think and do it the right way. Rather than just this whole thing about what's business. License, which on set business licenses is kind of. It's, it's so, it's so flaky over the years. It was in, it was out. But. Isn't our goal, we want to get all STRs in this, in the community. Into the system, paying city taxes and, and, and following the, the new rules. Anyway, I'm going to throw that out because I, I just don't think that it's, it's five things that are currently operating legally. If we, if I use the numbers here, five or six or seven, depending how you count it. Carl, it's my understanding that those that are not. Operating what we would call legally now. Are prohibited. From coming forward with business licenses or conditional use request. Because of the current moratorium on level ones. Is it feasible to lift that moratorium that would allow some of these operating SDRs to? Try and, and get compliant with existing ordinances and laws?
Well, that's, that's another strategy, I suppose. That would. The moratorium sunsets in September, end of September. And then it could either be extended or. Or we just, or just let it sunset. And then, yes, of course. Any of those folks could come in for a conditional use permit at that point. Under our current code. If they meet the lodging level one definition. And then they can meet, and they can meet the conditional use permit criteria. Certainly, they could, they could do that and anyone else could too, so. Any short term rentals and anyone who wanted to. Start up a short term rental in the city. Could come in as well, and I don't know what that would look like. Would we get forty applications all at once? Would we get two? You know, it's, it's impossible, again. It's impossible to know what that's going to look like. And, and how many of them are out there? And now. We've, we've gotten attention, you know, I think any jurisdiction that's looking at. Short term rental regulations. In the country right now and, and those that are. That are banning them in many places in the country. They're getting attention and there's, you know, there's lawsuits happening. There's cities fighting with these platforms. You know, San Francisco. Has all but eliminated them from their city limits, you know, it's. There's, there's battles going on right now. So I, what is, I don't know what that looks like if we were to just relinquish our current. Stopgap on those. Without putting any addition, any other regulations in place, I don't, would council, I don't know if council would support that. Of course, it would be council's decision. But that could be a recommendation. That comes from planning commission, certainly.
Any other comments on Bob's suggestion? Or is the point that he made?
So, and if I understand the point, then the, the point you're making, Commissioner Saltus, is that all is so. So in basically. We would, so we would have to come up with some criteria, I would imagine, for proving or for those people coming in to prove. That they've been operating a short term rental. For a certain period of time. That they're, that they've been paying, that they're been paying their taxes. Lodging taxes and, and what have you. All of those things we'd have, we, we would put some criteria in place for. That they would have to meet, I guess. And, and there again, I just, you know, just want to caution that there are folks who have gone through a legal process. Already to legalize their short term rental through conditional use permit. And they. These others would not have to do that.
Correct. It's not totally fair to the people that have done it the right way. But are we trying to, what are we trying to accomplish? Are we trying to get everybody in the universe that we can all work together in the future or? You know, I, I just thought out Carl for you and you and Jeremy to kind of cogitate on. Thank you. Sure.
Well, I think it's an excellent point, but I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with. If they haven't at least been paying their lodging taxes. I, I. I, I appreciate your point, but. Maybe they don't have a business license, but doing it completely under the table and. And then coming in and, and having. Full amnesty. I personally am not comfortable with that.
Yeah, I agree with Greg. If we're going to have some sort of amnesty, they have to have at least paid the lodging taxes and be able to submit evidence that they have done so. But if you're completely under the table, absolutely not.
Commissioner Greiner or Bradbury, do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree with Commissioner Kreid's comment.
No further comments for me.
Okay, next item.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to, and, and I'll just come back to this point in the meeting and we'll, we'll, we'll get all of the thoughts in here, but. Staff analysis. Something along those lines. Okay. So how will the city compensate for losses? I, we didn't have even a discussion point on this one. I, I, we weren't sure exactly what was meant by this, I think. I think it was. I don't actually know. So if there is, and this may have come from a commissioner, so if there was a commissioner that made this comment. We don't have everybody here, of course, so. I think it was sort of to recoup, oh, Commissioner Greiner.
I, I think it came from the short term alliances version of it because I just read it and. Their, their one that they just sent us and, and actually I noted it in my. Comments for this evening. I, I think that it came from there originally, and that's the reason why we put in here. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but. And, and actually, I, I had a note in my notes saying. Is this something that we need to do? So, but it was item number thirteen on the new version of the short term. Rental Alliance is document. I don't know if that helps.
I think in the newest letter, it was in reference to this. This table. But I know it, it previously came in from a commissioner's comment. And I think there might have been a mention of it during. One of the June meetings.
I, I remember what it is now, actually, it's, it's, it was, it did come from. A public comment and they were asking how the city is going to compensate for those income properties in those investment losses. If we put these regulations in place. That's what, that's what the question is. It's not. Really a. Question necessarily for the regulations. It wouldn't really go into the regulations. It's a little bit. So I don't, I think it's, it's, it's not a moot point. I don't want to say that. It's just not a. I don't think it's a point of discussion necessarily.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think it's, I don't think that is. A point for the planning commission.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I think that's right. And, and I guess I missed one here. So number eleven fines, and really this should be, it should really be civil penalties, just to use the proper vernacular. So current draft that we most recently looked at said that enforcement would be conducted consistent with all applicable GIGAR municipal code enforcement provisions. And, and so, so planning commission is aware, we just met with the city council on code enforcement. And our code enforcement program. And so the community development department, myself and. And our code enforcement program. And so uh the community development department, myself and others, including our our code enforcement officer, who's going. Who's now our full time code enforcement officer, uh are looking at the code enforcement program. writ large and trying to uh, we're going to come back with to council with some recommendations on. Um how to make it better, um how to make it more manageable. Um and and potentially uh refine some of the civil penalties. That are sort of scattered across different different provisions and apply and are applied differently in different cases. So. Uh I I don't know, I don't know if that has any bearing on this, um but it it might when the council. Um gets the recommendation, if there is some recommendation for. Uh a civil penalty process for short term rentals that's specific to short term rentals rather than utilizing. Uh what we already use in uh title nineteen for land use violations of title seventeen. Which this would fall under title seventeen. Now those those civil penalties and and. That structure is far less. Punitive, I suppose, than this, what we're proposing here would be.
Carl, if I may, I I could maybe can add to the discussion because there was um some discussion on. This after I had to leave the meeting uh two weeks ago. And um as and I, but I went back and watched the whole um, you know, the remainder of the meeting or the part that I missed. So there. And as I reflect on that, I I think there there are two considerations here about fines and one. Civil penalties. One is the civil penalties for violations of an operating S T R. So a noise complaint, for example. Or, you know, whatever any of the 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 civil pennies would be for a violation of this ordinance. And and. That is different in my mind. Um and should be less costly. And and may and should entail perhaps a warning letter for the first violation. Um and then escalating penalties for every violation, you know, after that with. A cutoff at some reasonable number and that number shouldn't be eight. That that, you know, where you you you'd revoke the business license. That's different than. A new S T R or a S T R who attempts to. Operate under the radar, you know, and and completely out of line with the ordinance. So those are two different things. And the latter thing in my mind should be a much stiffer. And significant financial impact and and have no warning letters. And that. You know, and then it gets into what you had suggested of where they're given notice and then they're immediately. Um or whatever, you know, after some number of days, they, if they continue to operate, they'll sustain a significant financial. Penalty for every day that they're in violation when they continue to thumb their nose at the at the city. So. Maybe that will help clarify what what the discussion, I think, was kind of. Crossing over of what what I saw you all discussing after I left, after I left the meeting.
So Greg, what we could do would be to have a uh for violations of relatively mire portions of the ordinance. So excuse me, such as noise or parking. Or holding an unauthorized event, warning letter, two hundred fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, suspension of permit.
Other thoughts?
Can I, I just want to chime in really quickly now. So because we're utilizing this new, we're we're going with this idea of using a a land use permit, so a type two permit. As well as a business license, we kind of have two things going on here and you know, and um and it just occurred to me actually about that relative to civil penalties. That, you know, our title nineteen covers title seventeen, that's where the short term rental permit regulations would live. Um and we could certainly apply something additional to that, uh I believe, within that ordinance. But for the business license itself, which is. Sort of our um. That's our, yeah, our operating piece of this that would be renewed on an annual basis. And and more easily revocable than a land use permit. That that license business or by our business license code has um. Specific processes in place uh for revoking a business license. And it also has a civil penalty schedule in it. Uh and that would be that an op- operation of a business without a license. Would be that is um. Five hundred dollar penalty. And operation of a business license after expiration. Would be the same with five oh one oh nine oh. Sorry, it's actually a different section. So it'd be the renewal of the license. Subject to the license, the penalty set forth, and you have to reinstate the license, which should be assessed in addition. So it'd just be the renewal of the license. And violations of the business license ordinance. So that would also include a violation of the short term rental ordinance in title seventeen. Would be five hundred dollars as well for each penalty.
So that would that mean then, like if they rented one night, they and they're in violation of that, you give them a notice, you find them five hundred dollars. Three days later, they rent again. That's a that's a new violation.
That would be a new penalty. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think it would make sense for this ordinance to reference. These penalty provisions in other ordinances, whether it be for a business license or noise or parking. Wherever we have those penalties established, they should be the same in this ordinance.
Yeah, you know, we don't want to treat it too much differently than we treat other like businesses in the city. Uh or uses, I should say, it's not really necessarily a a business per se. Uh but it does require the business license. And then, of course, within that same chapter, we have the ability to revoke, suspend or revoke. The business license and there's a number of criteria.
So if they're operating underneath the radar. Without a business license, this business license category could address that.
It would address that operating, operation of a business without a license.
Okay.
Generally. Speaking, most businesses that we find are doing that or their business license has expired for one reason or another, you know, we allow them the opportunity to come in and get that business license. Put back in place. In this case, though, if they've got a land use permit that specifically has has a condition specific to, you must have a business license in order to operate. Thereby they're operating illegally. We would be, we would be enforcing on them from the zoning code as well as from the business license code. So they would be in violation of two two separate codes. One could lead to revocation of their business license altogether or denial of a business license if they were to apply for one.
I'm okay with referencing the other processes in the business elsewhere in the in the uh. In the code, rather than having necessarily a specifically on- onerous or more onerous set of charges for S T Rs. If it's already got a process in place, let's use it.
I I was only. Having a pregnant pause, Carl, because you look like you're fixing to say something important.
Well, I was, I was going to say something more. I don't know if I want, if we want to get into it or not, but of course, then the business license code does go into criminal penalties as well.
Yeah.
Um which can get up and get into and those actually do then become um fines. Uh and so they can be criminally prosecuted. Um they can end up with fines up to not exceeding a thousand dollars or imprisonment. Uh for a period not to exceed ninety days. Uh of course, that would be, you know, for things that got real bad. So but there is that, there is that hammer in the in that code section as well.
Well, I think suffice it to say, it sounds like the the operating without business license is substantial. Um and and um so I would. I would agree with the recommendation to just write into this ordinance references to. The other ordinances or titles are already in place.
Okay.
Okay. What's next?
Uh go back here, shares. So there was a question about how how much the city has collected in lodging taxes. Um I think we. I think we sort of covered that previously. Um and we don't, we don't have that number. Explicitly for short term rentals. Um we're not really able to aggregate that data that comes from the state, unfortunately. At least that's the answer that we've been given to this, to this, to this point, to this, at this time. Now, again, once we put regulations in place, we we may be able to. Figure out a way to break that data down more to actually figure it, you know, figure out what we're getting for by. Motel, hotel, bed and breakfast. Short term rental, but right now we just don't have it. And we did ask the short term rental alliance. Uh if they could provide that data, they could not.
Well, I I think I think they sort of missed the point of when I asked the question, and that is. You know, they may not have the data currently, but again, they have, they have. Very specific with their number, they have thirty three and they could say, hey, thirty three people, please, please provide us with the amount of taxes that you pay, each have paid over the last five years. And then they would have the data. So and then we would have the data.
Yeah.
So it is, it is a know, it's a knowable number. Uh I would believe that they don't currently have it, um but it's a known number that they could obtain.
Just to reiterate my question, Carl, in my letter, do we know how much money the hotels pay in lodging tax?
No, it's just all we have is the lump sums.
So we don't even know if they pay their lodging tax then?
Well, if they're operating um. They they will be required to pay those taxes because they have a, they have a state business license. So the state would require them to pay those taxes. So it's it's really not something that the city regulates hands on. It's something that the state regulates. We receive, we receive the. The taxes from from the uh what, you know, from from that, from what they're regulating, but we just don't know. We don't have, they don't give us the breakdown of where it's all coming from. Which I agree does seem weird, but I, that's that's the answer that we've been given. So again, I'd like to get more. I'd like to get to the bottom of it myself. Um and hopefully we will. But so far, that's kind of, that's all we know. And that's what the state has told us.
Just trust us, we're giving you the right number.
Yeah, kinda.
That's never gone wrong before, has it?
No, how could it ever go wrong? What could go wrong here?
Carl, who collects the uh tax in the state? What department?
Uh Department of uh. Michelle, help me out. Is it Department of Revenue, D O R?
It's Department of Revenue.
Yeah.
Okay, let me uh, let me see if I can pursue that a little bit. I happen to have a contact in the D O R that I could ask.
Carl, isn't there a Gig Harbor Lodging Tax Commission?
There is an L TAC committee, yeah.
Yeah.
That's that's true.
Wonder if they could provide any insight.
Well, Laura Pettit, who's, you know, our our um our tourism director. Is she chair, I think, I believe she chairs that commission and she's the one who got us the data that we have.
Okay. All right. I agree with Bob. Trust aside from the government doesn't feel right.
And I'm not saying that. I am definitely not saying that, but that's what.
Not on you, Carl.
That's what I've been told. Um, okay, so on to demand for uh short term rentals. Uh again, this is more data, you know, is another data driven question um that I don't have answers to. Um but we did offer this um. You know, we we wouldn't know. And I think, you know, the question here is, is there, you know, could could we require the short term rental operator to provide us with an estimate? Of the number of days that the unit would be rented. I think that's kind of difficult. Again, you know, to Commissioner Saltus's point about that, that's that's kind of a hard thing for them to predict. They could say, well, we're allowed this many days, so we would, we could predict that many days. Where it really, where the rubber really hits the road, I think, is during the license renewal phase and the affidavit. And. During that affidavit process, we could certainly ask them to supply us with the number of days that they rented. They would have, they would have that number. I'm not sure what it would do for us other than to try and, well, it it would, it would tell us how many days they. Actually, we would need that number in order for to know if they're meeting the um. Definition of short term rental and and whether or not it is a primary residence. So we would need to know how many days they rented their whole house. During that. Period. So I think that would be an affidavit requirement.
Wouldn't they just still provide the same proof of primary residences before, rather than the number of days it was rented out as a whole whole home?
Well, they could. I guess this would just be another way of.
Another option for that, potentially.
Yeah, I mean, if they're putting it on the affidavit and saying, yeah, we rented it for. A hundred and eighty days this year. They're signing a note that's getting notarized and they're signing it. That goes on the record. If we find otherwise, then we've got a legal document saying that this is what they told us. But agreed, it it might, it could be a moot point, Jeremy, to your point that if we're using some other. Means to prove that that's their primary residence, which which we have a number of those things included in the primary residence definition. That might be enough.
Yeah, because I. If you're asking them how many days they're renting, that would include uh, maybe if they're renting out a single room, although it's still there. Or you can combine that with the whole home days. So I think it would potentially just be simpler. Uh to provide the same thing as on the initial application or proof.
Well, I think, as I recall, that this was one of those things, as we were trying to get data to understand, you know. We're trying to collect as much data as possible. But I I would, I would state, and I think the general sense of of the discussion from the commissioners over time is that this is probably a difficult thing for the owners to predict. Um and getting it in retrospect is easy because then you have an absolute number. Trying to get it prospectively and and guess not so easy. And does does it? Uh at this point, um with the way that we're leaning, um. Would it make any difference? And I would submit no, uh and that that we can uh strike that. Would it make any difference? And I would submit, no, uh, and that, that we can uh, strike that. Um. I mean, after that, I would, I would keep it, you know, it. Retrospectively, that, that information should be on the affidavit. But asking for it, you know, when they apply for a business license, how many days a year you're, you think you're gonna rent it? Um, then I, I don't think it's, I don't personally think it's necessary. What the rest of you guys think?
You, you're absolutely correct, Greg. Having been in this business, there's no way you can predict how many days you're gonna rent.
Agreed.
Okay.
Commissioner Brad, are you agree?
I agree.
I concur as well.
Okay, moving along.
Uh, pre-existing non-owner occupied, uh, okay.
I think we've dealt with this, right?
Yeah, this is kind of the same question again. So this is sort of, this is that staff analysis. Um, annual renewal. I think we, we all, that, that's a foregone conclusion at this point. That's a yes, kind of work through that.
And that's just for the business license.
That's just for the business license.
Does the short-term rental, um, or permit then stand indefinitely?
Yes.
Issued to individual, not property or.
That's right.
Yeah. So it doesn't travel with the sale of the home?
Yes, that's true. Yeah, that, I mean, that is the idea. And that's something I need to, I need, I guess I, I need to, I need to confirm that with Daniel. Um, let me just make a note of that.
I believe it could be similar to what we have in our home occupation code section.
Yeah.
Which has a similar thing, just stating that uh. Home occupation permit is issued to one person, it should not be transferable to any other person. Nor shall the home occupation permit be validated at any address other than the one appearing on the permit.
Right, yeah, and we talked about that the other day. I think that's the, I think that is the answer right there. I just, I. Well, well, well.
I think we discussed that at the last meeting also, Carl, or at some meeting before this one.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, and then rental fee data, uh, with application. Should this be required? City doesn't likely have any use for this data. And his application process, state collects the taxes and they may need this information during license renewal. This may be something the city is interested in including on the affidavit. So this would be the fees that the, that the operator received.
I would recommend no, because that data would become available with whatever room taxes they pay.
Well, we, we would like it to be available to us anyway. Um.
So this is prospective, um, rental fee information, it's like what their rates are gonna be over the year? Or is this what they actually, um, captured?
Yeah, I think the, I think the initial uh, item here, rental fee data with application is, was meant to be something that we would require with the, with the application. Um, I think we, I believe we may have talked about this previously. Um.
Yeah, I think, I think the consensus was that this also would be difficult because.
Yeah.
It fluctuates and, and again, is probably more appropriate retrospectively on the affidavit.
Right.
Than, than trying to, to guess, to see the future.
Yeah, I, I, that, that would be my um. Recommendation.
I believe that, that was the discussion. Is there anyone that disagrees with that?
I'm just kind of wondering what we're gonna do with the data, even retrospectively. Is there gonna be somebody looking at that and making an assessment or a judgment about it?
I think one of the thoughts that we had was it would be a way of double-checking that they, you know, if we were able to see how, what they had paid in taxes. Then we would be able to kind of truth out. Another way of truthing out that they've been paying their fair share of taxes, if they're saying that they made this much, but then we can see in the state records that they've only paid this much in taxes. Then there could be some disconnect there. I don't think that there, I don't think the city really needs to get involved in it, to be, to be quite honest. So I think I would, I think I would change my recommendation. To say that I don't think it's data that we need to collect at all upfront or after.
Mr. Griner, what do you think?
I, I, I agree that, I mean, if it's something that, you know, it makes no sense to collect something that we're probably not gonna look at, or that the city's not gonna be involved with. So I agree with Carl's last comment.
Commissioner Saltis?
Yep, I, I concur.
Commissioner Crossick?
Carol doesn't think we need it, uh, let's leave it out.
Yeah, yeah, that's consensus, I agree.
Yeah. Um, parking, um, standard SFR parking requirement sufficient for an STR. In our current version, our most recent version of the ordinance, we stated. That off-street parking would be provided for all guests and available at all times during the guest's stay. So with the idea that. The, the single-family residence is a, is already permitted as a single-family residence, it's required to have two parking stalls. If the whole home is rented out, it's still a single-family residence, being up, being basically lived in in the same manner. And that we shouldn't require additional parking as a result. Um. Furthermore, I would say with our current version of thinking, strategy that Jeremy and I are working on. With the primary residence idea. We don't necessarily think that we, we would view short-term rentals as a use. In other words, it wouldn't end up on the short-term, it wouldn't end up on a, on the use table. And wouldn't constitute a change of use if somebody were to. Um, propose a single, uh, short-term rental at their single-family home. Uh, therefore, there would be no. The, the, therefore, the short-term rental is essentially an accessory of the primary use, which is a single-family residence. So our thinking is that. The single-family residence has already been permitted as a single-family residence and parking has already been. Evaluated.
Well, the, the thing I would say about that is there. There was no pushback in any public comment that I could see. On, on that wording that off-street parking must be provided for all guests and available at all times. The, I.
Agreed.
Does anyone else recall any? Any pushback from the Alliance or other current operators of STRs or, or, uh, other members of the public?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear anything from the uh, Alliance on that as being an issue. I, I think they were comfortable with requiring off-street parking.
And I, and I, I would say, Chair, I think this language, I think this language works. It leaves it vague enough, um, and just, you know, leaves it sort of discretionary. That if we had a short-term rental that was creating some parking problems in the neighborhood. That we could fall back on this regulation and say, hey, you were required. To provide off-street parking for your guests, and that's clearly not happening. Uh, without putting a specific number on it.
Yeah, I think if.
Go ahead.
No, no, Shan, you go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Griner.
I, I think that originally, the whole reason we put that in was for, you know, like the historic district to, you know. Prevent too much parking on the street and those type of things, and I still think that's an important thing to keep in there. So I, I like keeping it the way that we have it written.
Thank you, Commissioner Crossick.
Yeah, Shannon, I agree with you, and I think that if you do have, uh, problems created by the short-term rental with a lot of on-street parking, you're gonna hear about it.
Okay. I think that's everybody. Commissioner Griner, I guess we did, you, you agree with that? Can you support that?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think it's sufficient.
Um, okay, and finally, this was, uh. We, we did not produce this map, and I apologize for not having produced this map, but we did look at, um. In lieu of that, we did look at the, where the, um, short-term, or not where they are, but who. Operates the short-term rentals. That was the data that Jeremy provided earlier on in the discussion tonight. Um. Again, I think we know most of the short-term rentals that are operating, that are known to us right now, are operating in Finnholm and, and Millville. For the most part. Uh, and again, it's only about nine, but I would say, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it, all of them are. Are in those two, look, in those two areas, the ones that are known, correct?
Yeah. Yeah. I think there might be some, one or two outside of that, but for the most part, they're all right there.
Yeah, I think there's about three, maybe three on Ross Avenue.
There's one on Grand View, and that's a person who's, who's submitted a letter in the past.
Yes. That's true. I don't know if they are one of the conditional uses, though.
Yeah, I don't know.
We do know about that short-term rental, but I'm not sure that they. Are on our radar as far as one that has a CUP or a, um, or a business license.
Okay. So is that it?
That, that's it.
Nice work, team. So next step, steps, Carl, what do you, what's the path, the moving forward?
Uh, well, we're, we're going to put together, uh, an ordinance, um, for a public hearing on August fourth. Will, will have that released, um, the, the notice for that hearing is going out on Monday. July twenty-fifth. Uh, and we will have the ordinance and materials. Draft regulation released on Thursday, July twenty-eighth. And the public will then be able to provide public comment. Prior to. The hearing, uh, and then, of course, be able to provide public testimony at the hearing. It'll be followed by deliberations and, um, potentially a. Uh, vote for a recommendation.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Really, really been a great, great discussion. I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
My, my, my brain, my brain is dead at the moment, but I am very. Oh, that's right. Sorry. Did you want to go over that, Commissioner Saltis?
No, I just wanna say thank you, Jeremy.
Oh.
The only problem is they all end up at the same time. They're supposed to save time with the second, with the new option.
Well, I, you know, actually, that's a good point, Commissioner Saltis, in that they do, actually, it would be shorter on the, in the type two. We didn't, we didn't depict that. Well, I didn't even think about that, but. Uh, if you look at the, we were kind of counting the number of arrows in there. If you look at the number of arrows.
Right, there are less arrows, for sure.
Yeah, there's less arrows. So it will be a shorter process.
Thanks for doing that.
And, and I believe fewer dollar signs.
Definitely fewer dollar signs as well.
I'd like to point out that I learned how to do that graph right before I started making that graph.
Nicely done.
Just wanted to say thank you, Carl and staff, and, uh, Carl, what is the next thing we're going to hit after we finish this one?
Uh, you know, I'm meeting with, um, with, uh, the, our other two senior planners, Roxanne Robles and, um. And Robin Bolster Grant. We are meeting tomorrow afternoon. To work on our schedule for the comp plan docket item. So we've got a couple of things coming. One will be probably the one that will get to you first, I would think, is probably gonna be the pros plan. Um, update, which is less of an update and more of a, um. Uh, an addition. To the comp plan. So we, we had to, we, we've got a new pros plan. That was adopted, but now the comp plan needs to be consistent with that pros plan, so that. That will be, um, that one should be fairly straightforward. Um, and then we're working on, uh, the process for the climate change comprehensive plan amendment that Commissioner Saltis has been sitting on. The, the, uh, commission or committee, sorry, for that amendment and update. Uh, so we're bringing that, we have our last meeting next week, next Thursday, Wednesday. And then we'll be bringing the findings from those meetings, uh, and some options back to the council. Study session on the twenty-eighth to get some direction from them on how they would like us to move forward from there with, with the committee, of course, that we, that we have put together. Um, and so depending on, depending on what council tells us to do or directs us to do, that. That will determine when we can, um. Bring that one forward to the planning commission. Um. Those are the two that are top.
Do you anticipate? Carl, I'm sorry, but do you anticipate a separate new chapter for climate change to the comprehensive plan or? Um, bits and pieces scattered throughout?
Well, so we're present, we're gonna present some options to the, to council to get some direction from them on what, how, how they would like to do that and, um. You know, we, we, of course, want to, uh, start working on our client, on a climate action plan. The quickest way to get to working on the climate action plan. Um, is to at least get some direction in the comp plan. That, uh, that states that we will have a climate action plan. So the easiest way to go would be to, to make that comp plan amendment very simple. Um, and just some, some, some very simple goals and policies. Uh, so that's one option. The other option would be to do as you're stating and, um, create a new element. In the comprehensive plan for climate change, which would likely be something that we would want to do with our twenty-twenty-four periodic update, that would kind of make more sense. And/or just adopt what we come up with as a climate action plan, as an appendices to the comp plan. Um, so that's another option, and another option would be to, uh, take all of our goals and policies that we've worked up through this commission or committee process. Figure out where best to put them in the comp plan and, and focus on. A more robust amendment to the comp plan and then focus on climate action plan later. And then, of course, there's a no-action option as well. Where we would. Not do anything now, but maybe start laying the groundwork of, uh. A comp plan amendment as well as our, as well as our climate action plan.
Thanks.
All righty.
I have a question. Where do we stand on getting a new planning commissioner?
Well, there's actually two vacancies.
Oh, two vacancies.
Yeah, that's true.
What, that, are people applying for that? Is there a deadline? What's going on with that?
We do, we have had, um, we have had applications, we have, have had applicants for the two seats. Um, we have, uh, interviewed all of those folks, um, and recommendations, um. Have been made up to the, uh, mayor. Um, and they're, they're working through their process of appointing, um, planning commissioners. The process is, is new. Um, and so they're looking into how best to do it. I think in the past, they had had, uh. The city council would put together. the city council would put together, um, a committee, and then they would make those appointments. But the code doesn't really support that. Um, so they're working through the, the, the new policies and procedures of the council. Uh, I'm sorry, I know the code requires that the mayor make those appointments. Um, and recommend appointments, and the council would actually make the appointment. Uh, but they are looking at maybe a, a more of a, of a hybrid approach, um, whereby, uh, the mayor, well, less of a hybrid approach, an approach where the mayor would actually just make the appointment. Um, and maybe the, um, planning or the council would have, uh, would be more of a recommending body. That they haven't, they haven't land, what I guess I'm trying to say is that they haven't landed on exactly how that's going to work, and the code is not so clear as, as to how it's done. So we're, we're waiting, uh, at this point, I'm waiting to hear how they're going to approach it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's not a very good answer. I apologize, Mr. Griner, and, and the rest of the commissioners. I apologize. I wish I had a better answer on that one. It's been.
Want, they could let us know on August eighth? Who was appointed?
That's, that's what's on the schedule right now. Thanks, Michelle. Yeah, they, they do have that on the schedule for August eighth to make the appointments, but I, I haven't heard anything in a little while, so, and it's already late in July now, so. That's the, uh, that was the la, that was the last word, though. That's true. And, you know, and we need to get it done because, uh, right now, Amanda has agreed, Commissioner Bennett has agreed to stay on, uh, even though she can't really be here, because she's made plans, assuming she wasn't going to be on the commission. Um, and Commissioner Huxma, Chair, has, uh, is essentially um, staying on the commission at the moment as well, um, until those appointments are made. So hopefully we get it sorted out sooner than later.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, any other questions? Excellent. Well, hearing none, then I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. It is seven fifty-three and I am closing tonight's planning commission meeting. Thank you all so very much. Appreciate it and thanks.